Good evening. Will you all please rise to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's ten U.N. Do I hear a motion to approve instructional personnel items 1 through 6 presented to the Board for approval this evening? Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor? Those opposed? Extantions? Motion carries. Dr. Chase, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to first, well, I guess be the first to congratulate this team. This is a huge milestone in your professional career. Tonight, the Board has approved my recommendation to ensure your permanent status here in the school district, and that really speaks volumes to the person, to the people you are, to the collective energy as educators here in our school district. I wish to acknowledge each and every one of you individually, so when I call your name, I ask that you please stand. Nicole Basiano of Hyde Elementary School. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard, Alyssa Hirschberg of Bailey Elementary School. Congratulations to you, Alyssa, and I look forward to coming back to your classroom and learning new vocabulary words. Mr. Michael McHale. Mr. McHale, congratulations for a job well done, and I hope that you will now realize the importance of making that move to New York. Remember that conversation? So, I'm very happy. Ms. Tara Parker of Lea Jackson Elementary School. Typically, when I interview individuals, you know, it's a very professional meeting, and usually individuals are, "Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm sorry, I have to go there." Tara made me cry at the interview, and we were crying together because we were both so passionate about education, and so thank you for coming back from Virginia to join the staff. Tara's a TSTT student, today's students, tomorrow's teachers, and she has returned to the school district, and congratulations. Ms. Victoria Stolato, please continue to stand. Tara, continue to stand. Ms. Stolato is at Woodlands Middle High School. I remember when she was a substitute teacher here at the school district, and I kept hearing her name, and I wanted to know, what is the big deal about this lady? But then I've soon come to learn what the big deal is, and so welcome aboard, continue the great work. I wish each and every one of you a wonderful experience in our school district. We thank you for your commitment to our beautiful children, this lovely community. I'm just so proud of you. I don't know what more to say. Congratulations, and I'm just looking forward to great things to come. In my effort, in my effort to kind of move this forward, I actually inadvertently skipped someone, and I didn't mean to do this. I remember one of the things that a particular Board member who was sitting on my right said to me, I won't call any names, "Dr. Chase, make sure that you reinvent, resurrect our jazz band," I'm sorry, our marching band, and this person has not only resurrected our marching band, but has instilled a love of music in our students with special needs. I always refer to him as our rock star, so I also would like to congratulate Mr. Brian Kennedy of Woodlands Middle High School. Thank you all. Do you want to lead them to the reception, Mr. Warner?
Let's take 10 minutes. The freshmen are to the side. Thank you. Our first speaker for the night is Chris Valen.
Hi. I just wanted to first say congratulations to all those who received tenure tonight. I think you guys have approved a good group of educators, and I'm really happy to see that they'll be with us again next year and in the future. My question tonight is a very simple one. Like I asked last year, again this year, I was tracking the snow days, and we did not use more than one, to my knowledge, and I believe we have the calendar planning where we schedule 183 days of school, and I was wondering if those last two half-days of school at the end of June could possibly be canceled for students, and we still complete our 180 days required educational presence days for our students. That's it.
Go ahead.
Good evening. A decision has not been made, but please know that we're taking all of that under consideration. You'll know.
Okay. Super, thank you.
You're welcome. And if it does come to fruition, I want every child in Greenberg Central School District to owe it to you. I'm sure they'll be thrilled.
Our next speaker is Mary Spells.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess you're wondering where I'm going, and I'm glad you asked. Well, I'm going to the Evening of Elegance, which is June the 2nd at Stone Manor in Harthorne, and I have some of my friends here with me who are going also, but she's so busy working on something. Michelle, will you please come up and tell them what you're working on, and you didn't have a chance to get dressed yet? Put your clothes outside. Thank you.
So, we're doing something a little different this year with the Evening of Elegance. Of course, we're honoring amazing people in the district, but we're having raffles to help fundraise some money for our students and for events that the council would like to do. So, we have a 50-50 raffle, we have a birthday raffle, which is really exciting, but you'll have to come, so you can figure out how to win half of the pot. We have over 10 different silent auction items, ranging from wine, gift certificates from salons, drawing a blank, oh, limo services, and then other things. Actually, our principals and our schools are helping us also by providing different raffles, so there'll be a competition on who brings us the coolest basket to raffle. We are not keeping the money, it's going, you know, back to our kids and back to things that we would like to do as a district, so come out, because we're gonna raise some money for our kids.
Yes, and thank you so much. I have tickets here, they are still available, so make sure you see me tonight, or you can call me, everybody has my number, and I would be glad to serve you. We're gonna have a wonderful fellowship. We're gonna lift up the spirit that already exists in our school district, and this is what we do. So, anybody and everybody will be there. Come one, come all. Parents, this is for you, you will be our special guests, so please come. We are honoring the unsung people who don't get a chance to rough shoulders with other people, because everybody in our school district, as our superintendent says, is somebody, and this is the night to have a wonderful time. Come one, come all, see you there. 6 o'clock at the Stone Manor in Harthorne on June 2nd, from 6 to 11. Thank you, I'll see you there.
Tickets are available at Eventbrite.com. Our next speaker is Rita Jones.
Good evening. Gosh, the mic is... First of all, I wanted to say congratulations, I guess they have all left for the tenure teacher. I only knew Tara. I've known her and her family since she was a little person, so I was very happy she came back from Virginia. I have some questions, and also I wanted to say congratulations to Tracy Mayer, I believe she's now on the Board, and thank you to... Thank you to Debbie for your years of service, and I guess you will be coming to the Board meetings now? Okay, I have a question. I believe it's page nine on your revised budget, on your revised agenda.
Try giving us the item number, because our page numbers are a little different.
It's G, okay, G, Board Action, and it's with a fire alarm system? Well, I think several months ago, we voted to go ahead, it was on an emergency basis, and I thought we had then voted for the complete work to be done, and if I'm incorrect, let me know, but I thought at that time we voted the funds to be allocated for this work to be completed, and at that time it was supposedly an emergency, so I gather we're still working on that emergency. And then on page 11, would you explain, I think it's, I guess you said I have to list the item? I don't know. H, I guess it's included in H, because you have a lot of things on the H, but it's on, you're talking about someone, someone coming in to assist, and would you explain that, to provide professional development services? Okay, and then you go down to the other one where Miriam Bernaby is assisting, but that's not clear. Who is getting paid $675 per hour? I know you say she's helping out in the curriculum office with a maximum number, I know that, per day, with a number of, what, the number, maximum number of 126 days. Who's getting paid $675 an hour? It's not clear. Okay. And then at the bottom, number four, item number four, I think that's a new position? Can you explain all of those, because it's not clear to me, reading them, what is going on there? Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Good evening, Mrs. Jones.
Good evening, Dr. Chase.
I think the first one you referred to is CAST curriculum.
No, the Fire Department, the emergency.
So, the first one I'm gonna...
Funding source.
First one I'm gonna respond to, I'm gonna get...
Oh, okay.
So, I apologize, the first one I'm gonna respond to is references CAST, which is Curriculum Contract. As I think just about everyone knows, that we've adopted the Universal Design for Learning Model, and the individuals or their organization that actually provides the professional development is CAST. They are an organization that is housed out of Boston, Massachusetts, and they have been working with our school district all year long. I think there are some parents who are here who have participated in the parent workshop at the Little Theater, where we've learned about UDL from a parent's perspective. With reference to the question on $675 an hour, actually it's 600...
Per day, per day.
Right. It actually is 675 a day, I wanna make sure that we're clear about that, and it's an administrative contract, and the name that's attached to it is Miriam Bernaby. Miriam Bernaby will be contracted to work with us in continuing our art and music programs. As you know, she has retired, and we have basically retained her as a contractor, so you probably didn't see the name, I'm not sure how that structured on your, on your page, because you asked me about a name. The other reference you made, and I'm not really sure, but I think, are you referring to the World Language Program, the World Language position?
It's, the name, you have number four, item number four, Curriculum Contract, Brendan Gallivan.
Sure. So, Brendan Gallivan is recommended by me to be our new World Language, E&amp;L, IB Director for the district. One of the things that we talked about as we launched our 2017, 2018 school budget is having a focus on global learning, and we talked about a director for E&amp;L, which is English as a New Language. We have a very large and growing population in our school district. We also talked about restructuring IB as we know it in our school district. In addition, introducing world languages to our early, I'm sorry, to our elementary grades, and Brendan will be tasked with leading those three departments. And your question about the fire alarm emergency replacement, I'm going to ask Mary to just take that portion out of your Assistant Superintendent's report, and if you could just use that to answer Mrs. Jones' question. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
As you know, last fall, the Board approved the high school fire alarm as an emergency project, and we did set up funding last fall, which was a combination of funds that we had in capital money. We were using some funds from Fund Balance, and we were also using a portion of money from Smart Schools. We discovered last week that we were, we are not permitted to use Smart Schools funding for an emergency repair project. The project itself is complete, we just have to reallocate where the funding source, so instead of using $175,376 that we originally anticipated coming from Smart Schools, we are going to use that out of Fund Balance. So, we have to increase the amount of money that we are taking from Fund Balance for that project.
So, where was the other money taken from? The first set of monies we paid?
The capital money?
The first time we approved the money.
Initially, the initial approval was capital funds, the district had $464,953 in there. We had $175,276 approved from Smart Schools, and $209,771 from Fund Balance. Because we cannot use the Smart Schools money for this particular project, we're going to have to use $385,047 from Fund Balance to cover the cost of the fire alarm.
So, you say it's complete, the job is complete?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you. And our last speaker, I'm gonna butcher the name, Janet Irizuri?
Is it on? Yeah. Good evening. I just want to make the Board aware that our family is sponsoring an upcoming information session by LatinU College Access at Woodlands High School on June 6th at 7:00 P.M. The session is called Pathway to College, and it will cover topics as programs and support offered by universities for first-generation Latino students, which I am one, and Latino youth is, provides Latino students and parents with bilingual support and guidance to come true, to make their college dreams come true. And I would encourage members of the Board to attend, and as well as helping to set, to get the word out to ninth through 12th grader Latino youths and their parents to attend, and I want to thank you for your support. And I also want to thank Principal Mr. Smith and the Guidance Counselor, Mr. Domingos, for helping me set this up. They were very helpful. And also the ELSL teacher, I don't know her name, but she also is gonna be attending. And I just want to give you the flyers, and so, just to give you information on that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the public input portion of our meeting. And now we move on to the Superintendent's report. Dr. Chase?
Hey, good evening once again to those who are left in our audience, as well as those who are watching live stream, and those who will be watching later on. I would like to take this opportunity to give a heartfelt thank you to our community, to our residents, for approving our 2017, 2018 school budget. Because of your approval, we're able to bring wonderful programs to our school district, which includes World Language Program, revitalizing and restructuring our IB program, as well as really giving the attention to our E&amp;L programs as we should. Additionally, we can maintain our STEAM and STEM offerings and many of the other programs in our school district, so we thank you. You should know that your 74% approval rating is actually the highest it's been 10 years. I shared with the School Board last week a map, if you will, of where we were in terms of our voter approval in the last 10 years. 10 years ago, we started at a very, very low number, and that is below 50, and 10 years later, we can stand here and say, wow, look at where we've come. So, I thank you, community, for having the faith in the work that we do. I thank you for trusting us with your precious children, and trusting us, knowing that we will become a world-class school district, and we can only become a world-class school district with your support and with your approval rating, so I thank you, thank you, thank you. I think some of you have seen the video that was made by our children, and some of our staff and faculty, it was a lot of fun making it, but it was just our way of saying thank you, very simply. I also would like to thank our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Mary O'Neill, who works really, really hard in making sure that there was a budget that was comprehensive, it was easy for our community to follow, ensuring that your questions were answered, and that we took into consideration your recommendations for how we can make this budget something that we can all live with. So, thank you, Mary, for your hard work and for all that you do. I also want to thank Alicia Madera, our Treasurer, our School Board, as well as our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Personnel, Dr. Valente, and our Principals, and everyone else who played a role in putting this budget together. I think we've done a pretty good job. This tomorrow, May 24th, can't believe it's already May, the end of May, we will have a visit from newly-appointed Board Regent Judith Johnson. Our district was selected by Judith Johnson and Congresswoman Nita Loey to examine exceptional ECP programs, and we have an exceptional ECP program here in our school district. And so tomorrow, we will be meeting with Judith Johnson. Unfortunately, Nita Loey's schedule does have a conflict, and she will not be able to join us at this time, but she has asked if she could come by at another date, and I look forward to welcoming her. So, the administrators, and I will be meeting with Regent Johnson tomorrow, and she'll be touring our school district, but she'll be spending a lot of time in our early childhood program. I do want the community to know. I think it's great when we have a Board Regent to come in and to identify something exceptional that we're doing in our school district, and possibly using it as a model for other programs in the state of New York. So, congratulations to the ECP program, and congratulations to all of us for embracing the work that they do. Next week, we will be sending our Harshita Shet to the Scripps National Spelling Bee. I can't wait to see what happens this year. This will be her fourth year participating, and it appears, and I've looked through the list, and Evelyn, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we are the only district in Westchester to send a student. I'm very happy. There are 278 students worldwide who will participate, and Harshita will be among them. So, we're very pleased, and so let's give Harshita our best and wish her well, as she goes to Washington, D.C. for the fourth time to represent the Greenberg Central School District in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Additionally, speaking of national attention, next week, as many of you know, the Greenberg Central School District will take the field at Citi Field. We're looking forward to playing ball and having a great time. We hope for favorable weather. It is truly a Greenberg Central School District day. You know, our Facilities Director, Mr. Falcone, took a few of our custodial workers to Citi Field today for something completely unrelated. It was basically professional development on, you know, just beautifying, you know, the landscape, and it just so happened to be at Citi Field. And so upon entrance, you know, he was greeted by someone who said something very favorable about our school district and how they are anticipating us next week, so I just thought that was just really awesome for, you know, folks from the New York Mets to anticipate little old Greenberg Central School District next week, so we're really excited about it. One other thing that you may not know is that our food service provider, Aramok, happens to be the food service provider at Citi Field, and so Aramok has agreed that all Greenberg Central School District ticket holders will also have a voucher for a hot dog and a beverage while you're there, so that's one thing you have to, you could save on, and I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, please remember the tickets are still on sale. Come on out next week to join us. Typically, this time of year, I read off the list of college acceptances and all of those wonderful grants. I usually do that this time of year, and I spend a lot of time doing it, and then I get so excited about it, then I speed read, because, and I realize I'm taking up so much time, because it's really an exciting time of year. As you know, I like to consider myself to be a 21st century superintendent, completely non-traditional, if you haven't figured that out by now, and I really enjoy the embrace of technology in our school district. And so the high school did something a little bit different this year. I do not take credit for any of this. This is all the high schools are doing. I just so happened to be in the TV studio, looking over Brian Parker's shoulder, saying, "What's that?" And it was just such a beautiful video that I'd like to share with you all and share with the community, and it opens up with a message from our Principal, Mr. Matt Smith, Woodlands Middle and High School, and then we decided, we're gonna let the students tell you where they're going this year, instead of hearing it from me. So, without any further delay, hit the play button, Mr. Laser.
Hi, I'm Matthew Smith, proud Principal of Woodlands Middle High School. I would like to thank the parents for supporting us, our Board of Education, and our Superintendent of Schools for supporting our vision as we move towards academic excellence. Class of 2017, I'm so very proud of each and every one of you. As you move forward in life, just remember, the world is yours for the taking, stay focused, and we're proud of you. I wanted to introduce you to our Class of 2017, so without further ado, here's our Class of 2017.
Hi, my name is Brianna Parkinson, and I'm a senior at Woodlands High School, and I'll be attending University of Massachusetts Amherst in the fall of 2017.
Hi, my name is Leah Crane-Dudrick, and I will be attending University of California, Santa Cruz.
Hi, my name is Mia Waltham, and I'll be attending Duquesne University.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Butch, and I'll be attending Syracuse University.
Hi, my name is Kobe Pitts, and I'll be going to the College of Rockford.
Hi, my name is Kiara Lewis, and I'll be attending the University of North Carolina at Greenbrow. Go Spartan!
Hi, my name is Athena Scott, I'm going to Cornell University. Go Bears!
My name is Jaren Webb, and I'm going to Buffalo State College.
Hi, I'm Colin Regan. I've been accepted to the Honors Program at Northeastern University, and I'll be attending the College of Engineering.
My name's Andres Espinoza, I'll be attending University at Buffalo in the fall.
Hi, I'm Imani Radigan, and I'll be attending Stony Brook University.
My name is Tyler Renzen. Buongiorno, and, you know, I'm going to U Albany with the mascot of Dean Muddane.
Hi, my name is Evie, and I'm going to SCAD.
Hi, my name is Andrea Travis, and I'm going to Westchester Community College.
Hi, my name is Andrea Travis, and I'm going to Westchester Community College.
My name is Apura Parker, and I will be attending Alabama A&amp;M in the fall.
Hi, my name is Hannah Shatou, and I'll be attending Cal State University. Go Lions!
Hi, my name is Priseth Algon, and I'm going to Hanville College.
Hi, my name is Morgan, and I'll be attending Madai College.
My name is Tyler Ernest, and I'm going to York College.
My name is Elijah Plaza, and I'm going to RIT, known as Rochester Institute of Technology.
Hi, my name is Britta Irhary, and I'll be going to Full Sail University for AI programming.
Hello, my name is Jorge Villacocha, and I am attending Iona College in September.
Yoragzed, that means good morning in Hungarian. My name is Blanca Cosma, and I just committed to the University at Buffalo School of Engineering.
My name is Amora Borde, I'm going to Borde State, Class of 2017.
Hi, my name is Maggie McGee, and I'm going to be attending University of North Carolina ANT for the fall.
Hi, my name is Asher Mayorka, and I'm going to go into Medgar Everest.
Hi guys, my name is Asher Nibane, and I will be attending Virginia State University for the fall, Class of 2017, Class of 2021. See you there.
My name is Tamara Hyman, and I'm going to be attending LSU Post in the fall. Go Pioneers!
I'm Tony Green, and I'm going to Berkeley College.
My name's Melanie Lewis, and I'll be going to Stevens Institute of Technology.
My name is Chania Honus, I'm a valedictorian of Woodlands Class of 2017, and I will be attending Stony Brook University.
My name is Ethan Brown, and I'm attending the University of Notre Dame in the fall.
My name is David Aguilar, and I will be attending Brown University in the fall.
My name is Marcus Candy, and I'll be going to York College.
Hi, my name is Destiny Collins, and I'm going to Southern Conference Stadium this fall.
My name is Darius Coles, and I'm going to Buffalo State University.
Hi, my name is Dylan, and I'm going to Binghamton University.
My name is Kayla Green, and I'll be attending the College of New Rochelle.
Hi, my name is Russell Parker, and I'll be attending SUNY Morseville in the fall.
Hi, my name is Andrew Penous, and I'm going to University at Albany.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Gonzalez, and I'm going to Peachtree.
Hi, my name is Kalen Henderson, and I'm going to Penn State Hazleton.
My name is Marcus Postel, and this fall, I will be going to Virginia Union University.
Hi, I'm Omar DeBerry, and I'll be attending Hartwick University in the fall of 2017.
Hi, my name is Casey Gutierrez, and I will be attending Binghamton University.
Hi, my name is Veronica Salinas, and I'm going to the College of New Rochelle.
Yay!
Hi, my name is Johnny Bravo, and I'm going to SUNY Polytechnic Institute.
Hi, my name's Rob Lingard, and I'll be attending Buffalo State University.
Go Bengals!
Hi, my name is Tashana Dixon, and I'll be attending Jordan Mason.
Hi, my name is Kamal Brooks, I'm going to SUNY Broom in the fall.
Hi, my name is Remington Matson, and I'm going to British Academy, one-year prep school.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Pule, I'm going to Westchester Community College.
Hi, my name is Nick Palloza, and I'm listening to US Army.
My name is Kamani Thompson, and I'm attending SUNY Duhai, Class of 2021.
My name is Donna Ossay, I'm attending Dean College, Class of 2021.
Hi, my name is Thershen McGram, and I'm going to Utica College.
Hi, my name is Tiana South, and I'm going to Mercy College.
Hi, my name is Sienna Sackden, and I'll be going to the College of New Rochelle.
My name is Kwame Maxo, and I'll be attending Alfred University this fall.
So, you will find this video, because we'd like to share with the world what we're doing in Greenberg Central School District, because we want everyone to know. You will find this video on our mobile app. You probably got a little alert as you were sitting here. It's on our Facebook page, it'll be on our website, it'll be on Twitter and all of our social media as well, because we want people to see where our students are going. As you see, our students earn $5.3 million in scholarships and still rising. That's not the final number. We just thought this was a better way to express this to you. So I thank you, Mr. Smith, for, you know, your hard work. Testament to you. I see you got an Aggie out of there. I don't see any Spartans, but we're going to let that one slide, but it's all good. Okay. But it's all good, it's all good. But you did get an Aggie out of that, that's all right. But congratulations for a job well done. I think we have 120 students graduating. 120, excuse me, 121 poised to graduate, June 23rd. Tomorrow, the students will enjoy their prom tomorrow evening. It's New Rochelle's at the Surf Club, Green Tree, which one? The Surf Club, okay, at the Surf Club in New Rochelle. And that is all. Thank you all this evening.
Very good. Next item on our agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Business report. Mary?
Good evening. We already discussed the high school fire alarm resolution that we had on the agenda. I want to say thank you to the community for passing our budget, and we are very busy now closing out our current budget as well as opening up the new year budget. In closing out our budget, we have our auditors that will begin June 12th and 13th in the district for their preliminary audit, and we anticipate opening up the new year budget for people to begin entering things in June. While we won't approve anything and can't release anything, they may be able to get a jump start on the year, on the upcoming school year by entering information. We also have our repair reserve projects. They are still pending at State Ed, and we are in the process of getting the SECP determination resolution for the board to approve at the next meeting. And that's all I have. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Yes.
Antoinette?
The Communication Committee met last week on Wednesday. I don't have that date directly in my head, so please forgive, but we had a pretty short meeting. We reviewed some school administrative suggestions in regards to the new school district stationary and mascots. We discussed the district video, including having a deadline for completion of it. We also have talked about a deadline for ordering of the new mascots and school athletic wear, and will review, our next meeting, we will review a website that will ensure that the district website is NADA compliant. Our next meeting is June 28th at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports? Derek?
Turn that on. Good evening. I'm here to report that the Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award, we are seeking candidates and recommendations and nominations for this year's Nettie Jackson Award. For those of you who don't know, Nettie Jackson was a compassionate and tireless, lifelong advocate of quality education for all children. She was a concerned activist parent, community leader, and public school secretary, union president, and a personal mentor to scores of teachers here in the Greenberg Central School District. In honor of her, the Extra Mile Award, given in Greenberg, is dedicated to her. The following individuals shall be eligible for nomination, so as you're thinking about all those wonderful community people that you know, please consider employees, all members of the school district community, businesses, students, individuals who render service to the district, are all friends of our district, and all are eligible. Let's see. All nominations must be submitted on the official Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award nomination form, and that form is available on our website. And if you visit that website, you will see it is prominently featured. It is also available in Spanish. And for those of you who are not inclined to visit the website just yet, if you reach out to our district clerk, Ms. Ivy Kraus, she will provide you with a paper copy. So please bring it. We have nominations, we are always looking for more, so if you know someone, someone worthy, and I'm sure you do, please consider them for the Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports? Lloyd?
As a member of the Budget Committee, again, I would like to thank the voters and everyone, teachers, administrators, and especially Mary O'Neal, who helped us put the budget together. Thank you all for supporting the budget, and we're looking forward to move the district forward, providing new and exciting programs for children. In addition to that, last week, the Health and Wellness Committee sponsored our first episode of CHOPS last week. We had local firefighters, community members team up with students from RJ Bailey and middle school, high school. Our Mark provided the menu, and our own Greenberg Police Department Voltaire as judges. We want to thank everyone who participated and look forward to making this an annual event. End of my report. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any other reports? I have one from the Community Engagement Committee. The Community Engagement Committee met at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 22nd, that was last night, in the RJ Bailey Cafeteria. Our guest speaker was our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Personnel, Dr. Ron Valenti. He spoke on planned changes to our curriculum for the 2017-18 school year and beyond. Major initiatives included World Languages, a foreign language in elementary school, or FLESS program in Mandarin and Spanish from kindergarten through sixth grade, which will feed into our existing offerings at Woodlands Middle School. The current plan is to concentrate on Mandarin through third grade and add Spanish at fourth grade with options to participate in either one or both programs. The revised bell schedule for Woodlands, the start time has moved from 7:25 AM till 8:00 AM with eight 48-minute periods, this is for next year, dismissal at 2:45 and after school help through 3:10 PM. Accelerated programs in core areas of English, math, science, and social studies from grades seven through 12, including existing AP courses, reinstituting algebra in the eighth grade, and making courses IB compliant. The IB Diploma Program at Woodlands High School, beginning in fall of 2018, which will include IB-compliant courses, a Theory of Knowledge course, an extended essay, and a Creativity, Activity, or Service Project CAS. The appointment of a Director of World Languages, which we see in our agenda tonight, ENL and IB programs to manage implementation of these programs. Community members were pleased with the changes and urged the district to make greater efforts to inform parents about them, both online and at meetings that parents usually attend, such as back-to-school nights. Community members also applauded the existing What I Need or WIN periods at the elementary schools as a great way of providing differentiated instruction, and lobbied for inclusion of WIN periods as a permanent part of daily instruction. Stay tuned. Dr. Valenti invited community members to an upcoming Education Committee meeting, Tuesday, June 13th, at 4:00 PM at the mansion. The meeting will be recorded. For those unable to attend, it'll be posted on our website, and we'll probably also put it on the cable channels. In addition, we discussed the following topics. One, New York State budget and state aid formula update. The New York State budget passed, and short-term federal budget issues have been resolved. Our state aid did not increase. Over half GCSD students qualify for free or reduced lunch, but our state aid is among the lowest in Westchester, and our buildings have been rated as unsatisfactory by NYSED. Assemblyman Tom Abinanti's office is working to draft a new bill for GCSD with a temporary increase in building aid. Two, GCSD budget, I believe we talked about that already. Three, student achievement and testing. We went over opt-out rates for New York State ELA and math tests, not only in our district but in other districts. NYSED next-generation ELA and math standards have been submitted to the New York State Board of Regents as of May 9th for adoption, June 12th or 13th. You can take a look at those standards, if you're interested, at www.nysd.gov/aimhighny. Public comments on the plans will be accepted through June 2nd. We went over a list of GCSD events, and we've covered many of those already. The Scripps National Spelling Bee, Greenberg Day at Citi Field, PTO Council Evening of Elegance and Recognition has already been covered. There's also a Celebration of Life for Chuck Bronze on June 2nd at the Theodore Young Community Center at 6:00 PM. On June 5th, the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund Awards ceremony takes place at Woodlands at 7:30 PM. On June 8th, the Science Extravaganza at Woodlands from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Learn about science and have fun doing it. Activities, exhibits, and shows are available for students of all ages. We also talked briefly about the Spring Concert, CHOP Junior, which you've already heard about, and the Harlem Wizards and Seussical. Item six, community questions, suggestions, requests, and praise on the following topics: the approval process for media in the elementary schools, continuing efforts towards facilities consolidation, posting middle and high school course catalogs on the district website. The last meeting of the CEC for this year is Monday, June 19th at 7:00 PM at Woodlands. All are welcome. Are there any other reports? Moving on to approvals. Do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items 720 presented to the board for approval this evening? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening? So move. Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening? So move. Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance items. Do I hear a motion to approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening? So move. Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Business items. Do I hear a motion to approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening? So move. Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student services items. Do I hear a motion to approve the student services items presented to the board for approval this evening? So move. Do I hear a second? Second. All those, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. New business. Do we have any new business for this evening? Go ahead, Dr. Chase.
I would like to introduce everyone to our newly hired Director for ENL, IB, and World Languages, Mr. Brendan Gallivan. Congratulations, Brendan.
You're very welcome, and I'm very gratified to be here tonight. We're celebrating these wonderful graduates and teachers. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So move. Second. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion to adjourn carries.